Dear Lord, we come here tonight to do our best for our community today. We ask, dear Lord, that you guide us with the decisions that we have to make. Give us the ability to make the right one so that our community can further your cause here on earth. We ask that you be with those that are here tonight and those that are not here for some other reason. We ask that you watch over us, guide, lead, and direct us, for we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Commissioner Robinson thought it would be a good idea to go to Seattle and visit her grandkids for some reason, so she's unable to be with us tonight. Go ahead and get started. First item is approval of minutes.
Who approves the minutes?
Second. We have a motion as second, any further discussion? Those who favor signify with a "a"? Post same. Motion passes. Next item is bills.
Make a motion to approve bills. Second. Whatever, whoever.
We have a motion as second, any further discussion? Those who favor signify with a "a"? Post same. Motion passes. Under old business, new drilling of the new well.
Like anybody getting contracted or working for us?
We need to make sure that the information back to the people is the right way. All of this is made in a bad.
The city can enter onto the property and whatever they need to do, and then determine whether they'll purchase it. The initial price it's paid, the style of execution, it's included, it's part.
Hold on, perfect price. It's control of the government.
I need to hear my man.
Somebody got it. One of them.
One of them.
That's it.
When is the bound due?
Huh? When we exercise the options?
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion on this?
To approve our end.
I make a motion. Are we ready to go through with this now? I make a motion that we go ahead and accept this grant for the purchase of the drilling of the new well.
We have a motion as second, any further discussion? Those who favor signify with a "a"? Post same. Motion passes. Do we need anything else on the well, Larry?
I've talked to the builder, we're trying to get on the bus, we're trying to get on the bus, we're starting process again this month, so.
We need something on the.
We need something on the street too.
Right.
Oh.
The street that the city's going to develop, the unnamed street.
Will you make a motion on that?
Just to the extent you're going to make improvements on it.
I thought that was included in this one.
No, this is for the lease, the purchase of the property.
This is for the. Mayor also in this, if you look at, I'm sure you've seen it, but the actual flat provides for an easement as well. I didn't attach the flat for.
That's from the end, or from this unnamed street to their property.
Correct.
Yeah, and we agreed to do that.
Um.
Uh, would we need to put a name with that?
With the street?
Yeah.
I think so.
I think we would need to. Name it. Does all this have to be done, does it?
No, it doesn't have, it obviously doesn't have to be done until they get, they get ready. I don't know when they're talking about making the improvements in doing the drilling.
Hopefully into this month.
When?
The end of this month, yeah, July.
Well, I guess, I guess the street, it needs to, before, before we enter onto it, if there's going to be any improvements made on it, I do recommend that we go ahead and reference the street because it is a city street. I've referenced it as a city street and whatever improvements, if any, are going to be made on it, be authorized. But I agree with the mayor, it's not officially been named and I don't think it should be referenced as the.
Unnamed street.
Unnamed street.
What's the street before it?
It comes off South Mulberry, Hill Street.
Oh, it comes off South Mulberry. Hill Street, South Mulberry, the next one up to Chapman Avenue, but it's not near that far up, is it? We can name it Larry Carter Way.
No. No way.
No way?
We could just name it Well Street. It's going to have a well on it.
And that's it. Is, can anything ever be developed off of it? It could be extended out, couldn't it, for future development?
We're going on a dang, Overton.
I was going to say, would anybody have a problem with Overton Drive or Overton Lane?
Something like that.
Do you think they would have a problem with that?
No, I think they'd be fine.
That way we can get it all done tonight and.
Need it in form of a motion. I make my motion that we reference the street as Overton Lane.
And that we are approving.
And that we are.
Improvements to it.
Taking improvements.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion as second, any further discussion? Those who favor signify with a "a"? Post same. Motion passes. So everything's good on it. We've already proved everything else, we've got everything set up for the drilling, it's just a matter of getting them in here, so. Okay, under new business, first item is approval revisions to 14.4 vehicle pursuit policy.
We recently changed our vehicle pursuit policy back in late 2019, but there's been some new that's come about through KLC, and a few different things in it, and we'll find it here real quick. One of them is, it gives a list, officer may only initiate a pursuit when they're in breach of suspicion that one of these offenses has happened. And the only changes to this policy is that burglary in the first or second degree has been added to, robbery in the first or second degree, second degree has been added to that, which that was already in there. And then the last thirteen, or the attempt of any of these above offenses, so that's a difference. And probably, in the near future, there's probably going to be another change coming, but if we adopt this policy here, at least we'll be up to date now. If it's a reference, it's probably going to be policy coming down now. No knock warrant, y'all play on what it is, but no knock warrant.
Oh, yeah.
You can warn, search warrant from the judge, and that no knock warrant, meaning you can go straight in, you don't have to knock and announce who you are, nor are you supposed to announce, search warrant, police department, 2001, 2002, 2003, and then go in. So that's probably the only changes, that's probably down. And about cell phone. So that's probably new policy that's probably going to be. Right now, we're just beginning to go ahead with the approach to update our pursuit policy.
I make the motion, we update our pursuit policy according to KLC recommendations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion as second, any further discussion? Those who favor signify with a "a"? Post same. Motion passes. Limiting number of trash bags on the sanitation route.
Yeah, something to think about until the next meeting. We are experiencing high volumes of garbage. We're picking up 68,000 pound a week. We're pulling up to stops that we're picking up, you know, 15 to 20 bags, five and six garbage cans. And it adds more to the route, it adds more to our payroll and sanitation, it adds more to the landfill bill.
That's not like an apartment complex?
No, it's not, it's a house. These are houses.
People are staying at home and they're cleaning out, like everything, they're cleaning out their.
Well, this has been going on the past 12, 14 months.
Oh, really? It's gotten worse?
Yeah. Mary, I had Mary call around to see what other cities are doing, you know, some of the cities are doing limits to two garbage cans, two 45 gallon garbage cans, some are putting limits at five bags, some are doing three regular 45 gallon trash cans. We're just, I don't know what all they're throwing away, but it's just mounting up. You know, it used to take us about 14 hours to pick up the full route, you know, now we're pushing 17, 18 hours. It's nothing uncommon to pull up to a house and have to make two compacts.
Hmm. They do what?
It's like.
Question mark.
I mean, it's just, I've got some pictures on my phone, I'll show you later, and kind of see what we're dealing with. One city has, you know, two or three cans maximum, no bags sitting on the ground. I kind of like that because, you know, if a dog's getting the trash and tired up, my guys are trying to scrape what they can up to throw away. If they're all in cans, we don't have, we don't have to deal with that.
What about stuff, and speaking from experience, because this happens in my house, what about cardboard boxes and stuff that won't?
That's another problem. You know, we have, we have one house running, he has a business, and we are throwing a lot of his business material away. That's just one instance.
What I'm talking about, for my wife loves Amazon.
I tell you what hurt, when Harford stopped recycling, I mean, we started seeing a higher volume of cardboard.
True.
Too bad cardboard doesn't bring anything now, but.
Well, that's why they stopped recycling, because they couldn't.
Yeah. So just something to think about, you know, if you don't want to kick it around for a month, maybe just because of getting the next most many in.
It would be worth, if it will just pay for itself, it would be worth the recycling just to be able to get it off.
It's pay for itself.
It would pay for itself.
That's, we're getting close.
Are any cities within driving distance still do recycling?
No.
Somebody contract with like Central City, Orangeville or somebody?
Scotts was doing cardboard until last year, year before, but, you know, they, they had so much, they actually had it stored on, I guess, First Street, and I don't know if they were.
Yeah, I know where they had it stored and it.
Yeah.
It was finally just had to be, and got rid of these machines.
Yep. I think some cities had a, had a fee, if you want, if you want more sanitation picked up, you know, there was a larger fee associated with it.
Business parks, when it bothers me a little bit.
Do what?
The ones where you're actually picking up for a business.
There's a difference in the commercial rate, isn't there?
Correct.
Well, we need to give those folks notice that they're, at least give them a notice to get started with, that they're going to have to go to commercial rate.
You know, I think we adjusted our rates for last year, year before.
I think I called somebody who told me to call them about that.
Yeah, claims weren't doing it, but I was driving the truck that day when we picked it up, so I know exactly what was there.
Did you document it?
I did not. My desk just wanted to have Mary call up. You know, he tried to say, well, I guess when we called him that, he tried to call our hand on water running through his backyard, you know, trying to.
Water doing what?
Probably give an issue to not discuss the sanitation.
How many commercial cars do we really have?
Five or six.
Yeah, we don't have that many.
I didn't think we had very many, so maybe wonder.
You know, we don't, we don't mind picking up the garbage and being paid for, it's the abundance of it.
Do you think people bring it in?
I know we had jokes that they do.
Not with as many stops that were countering, you know, so much trash. I think, you know, we say it's household trash, it may be a garbage bag full of, of a dresser torn apart that they're sticking back, you know, we're calling that household garbage now. We have, we have wet beds, we have left couches here in the last six months, you know, because that's a spring and fall pickup day. It's just got to a point that it's overloaded. You know, I, I know we just raised the rate a year or two ago, but I would hate to have to go back in there and raise again to accommodate what we're taking. Just something to think about for the next month.
Okay, next item is approve to bid out franchise for natural gas. I really thought the folks from Atmos were going to be here tonight, not sure what happened to them. But it's, we had a 20-year with them, didn't we?
Correct.
And it's coming up for renewal, so they've met with me to want to start the bidding process. And I know they gave me some criteria they wanted us to use, which I know Mary has talked to KLC, and I think there's some issues we have to work out there, but I think we can still go ahead and approve this part of it right here to actual bid out the franchise and go ahead and get that process started.
I move to bid out the franchise for natural gas.
We have a motion as second, any further discussion? Those who favor signify with a "a"? Post same. Motion passes. Park signage. Is this on the?
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Number four.
Resolution on the.
I'm sorry, I, yeah. My glasses are fogged up.
It's all right.
For the resolution on Raines Avenue correction.
Evidently, after talking with Candy, the first one, it was supposed to be the original annexation, so I have went back and dug and dug, and I think I have found the correct one, but my problem with reading these old annexations is, I don't know how many times I've seen dredge ditch. If anybody can tell me where that's at, that might help me some. Or another issue I'm having with Tractor Supplies, whoever Austin Taylor was, does anyone know who that was?
I remember, I remember Austin Taylor.
The tax program goes back to 2008, it was always Junior Thompson, in city limits, and I've even called PBA and Tractor Supply to get it over in 2015, but it's been on the tax roll ever since 2008, as far as I can go back. So I'm still trying to get that one corrected, but I can't read these descriptions that they've given on these annexations from here to there.
So on Raines Avenue, we need to know where the dredge ditch?
Well, I have seen dredge ditch on probably five or six different annexations, so I, I have no clue where that's at. I've never heard of that. That's evidently way before my time. So I didn't know if anybody else would have any.
What'd you say it was?
They're calling it dredge ditch.
Well, see, there's, there's one, one that goes this way, and then there's another one that goes this way. I don't know which one it would be. The one that crosses it, and there's one that goes alongside it, I don't know which one it would be that you would call dredge ditch.
Yeah, I don't know, but I think I found the original, what was it, 1995, or that will cover, because it looks like it was more than just Raines Avenue that, the Raines Avenue dividends was taken in as one whole at that point in time, the best I can read these descriptions, so I'm hoping this is the one that she's going to need to finally get this one corrected.
Okay.
If not, I guess I'm digging again, and hopefully I can find the original again.
Okay, so you really don't need any?
I just need that this resolution approved.
Okay, well, yeah, but we're accepting this one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve that resolution.
Motion as second, any further discussion? Those who favor signify with a "a"? Post same. Motion passes. Now we'll do the discussion on the park signage.
Yeah, we caught three individuals trying to get into one of our buildings, and the police department talked to the county attorney, and the county attorney advised it'd be a good idea if we had signage at our park stadium, and it was open when it was closed, that way we can prosecute them for trespassing. So the sign we have a problem with is over at Amphitheater side. So I, I don't know what kind of language or signage or whatever we need to put up, I thought, you know, we'll run it through minutes and see what y'all want to, want to say.
AV, can we do something with the, on the amphitheater side first? Can we not do something, it is, it is closed to the public?
Yes.
Except for a sponsor event?
Absolutely.
Okay. That way you don't have to worry about time, there'd be, I don't want to put times on it like we do the other, because then it has nobody's business over there anytime, unless there is an event going on.
Okay. I don't know if I'd put a sponsored event.
Scheduled event.
Scheduled, there, scheduled. Okay.
Like the day of scheduled events? I mean, do we need to narrow it down to a time frame?
I think the hours of a scheduled event, because day, you don't know, 8:00 AM in the morning, they don't need to be there, but that night they might, but scheduled.
Yeah, I think I would just put closed to the public, except for, except during scheduled events, and just kind of, that leaves it a little bit loose. Where, you know, if they come in earlier in the day, and I say we're closed to public, that means we can still be back there working, prepping for that event, and.
Well, the only people that need to be back are the people that need to be working on that thing.
Right, exactly.
That's it, I mean, as far as I'm concerned.
If we had to sign us up, I think we could have charged a little more, so.
We did end up charging the, one was 19, the other two was due now, we did end up charging the one with no lawful transactional amount, times two, because of criminal summons is what ended up being taken out to the law. He hadn't been served yet, so he hadn't had court date set yet, but they shook the window, they didn't break the window, or anything, that time. Somebody did fly before, but.
But there's cameras down there.
But there's cameras now, so.
If, if he wouldn't turn to see the cameras, I'm not sure what we were doing.
Do what?
If the individual wouldn't turn to see the cameras.
Oh, yeah, can't turn to three cameras.
Yeah.
Is there a sign up at the entrance?
No.
We just closed the gates at, but we just closed, at the amphitheater?
Well, at the amphitheater, it even come out 2:31, is there anything?
No, we just closed, we got gates up there, and we close them at a certain time and open them at a close at a certain time, but I want to do something there too, park hours. The gates may still be open, but the, you know, park hours are from, what, we decide 5:00 AM?
5:00 or 6:00.
6:00, whatever people use it, like 6:00 AM to, I don't know, I wouldn't do 9:00 PM.
I think, well, I think the timer's on, the lights are 17.
Well, and that's okay, you still have light out there, but, well, 10:00 PM, except, but then again, except for scheduled events, because like baseball will be, will go over that.
Right.
The amphitheater, you have to go through the park to get there, so it'd be over that, but, but it, we wanted to put specific hours on, because no one has any business being there really between, unless there's something going on.
Nobody has business being at the amphitheater, except people that should be at the amphitheater, is the way I look at it.
But, huh? The park itself, the walking trail and all that, it'd be open to certain hours.
Well, that's what I say, it'd be open from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Nobody's going to be walking at 2:00 AM, they don't.
Hope not.
If anything, you could put up, just going to assist, let's assist them.
Yeah, that's giving them, if somebody is out there at 2:00 in the morning, we can add, there's, they're trespassing then.
So you need to, you're going to do the one by amphitheater first?
I think we do two different motions, one with the amphitheater.
I make a motion that we close the amphitheater to all people except during a scheduled event, with the signage up for that.
Close to the public, or something, we'll write that up, we close to public except during.
Support it better.
We have a motion as second, any further discussion? Those who favor signify with a "a"? Post same. Motion passes. Next item is approve to bid out franchise for natural gas. I really thought the folks from Atmos were going to be here tonight, not sure what happened to them. But it's, we had a 20-year with them, didn't we?
Correct.
And it's coming up for renewal, so they've met with me to want to start the bidding process. And I know they gave me some criteria they wanted us to use, which I know Mary has talked to KLC, and I think there's some issues we have to work out there, but I think we can still go ahead and approve this part of it right here to actual bid out the franchise and go ahead and get that process started.
I move to bid out the franchise for natural gas.
We have a motion as second, any further discussion? Those who favor signify with a "a"? Post same. Motion passes.
I think you forgot.
Resolution on the.
I'm sorry, I, yeah. My glasses are fogged up.
It's all right.
For the resolution on Raines Avenue correction.
Evidently, after talking with Candy, the first one, the, it was supposed to be the original annexation, so I have went back and dug and dug, and I think I have found the correct one, but my problem with reading these old annexations is, I don't know how many times I've seen dredge ditch, if anybody can tell me where that's at, that might help me some. Or another issue I'm having with Tractor Supplies, whoever Austin Taylor was, does anybody know who that was?
I remember, I remember Austin Taylor.
The tax program goes back to 2008, it was always Junior Thompson, in city limits, and I've even called PBA and Tractor Supply to get it over in 2015, but it's been on the tax roll ever since 2008, as far as I can go back. So I'm still trying to get that one corrected, but I can't read these descriptions that they've given on these annexations from here to there.
So on Raines Avenue, we need to know where the dredge ditch?
Well, I have seen dredge ditch on probably five or six different annexations, so I, I have no clue where that's at. I've never heard of that. That's evidently way before my time. So I didn't know if anybody else would have any.
What'd you say it was?
They're calling it dredge ditch.
Well, see, there's, there's one, one that goes this way, and then there's another one that goes this way. I don't know which one it would be. The one that crosses it, and there's one that goes alongside it, I don't know which one it would be that you would call dredge ditch.
Yeah, I don't know, but I think I found the original, what was it, 1995, or that will cover, because it looks like it was more than just Raines Avenue that, the Raines Avenue dividends was taken in as one whole at that point in time, the best I can read these descriptions, so I'm hoping this is the one that she's going to need to finally get this one corrected.
Okay.
If not, I guess I'm digging again, and hopefully I can find the original again.
Okay, so you really don't need any?
I just need that this resolution approved.
Okay, well, yeah, but we're accepting this one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve that resolution.
Motion as second, any further discussion? Those who favor signify with a "a"? Post same. Motion passes. Now we'll do the discussion on the park signage.
Yeah, we caught three individuals trying to get into one of our buildings, and the police department talked to the county attorney, and the county attorney advised it'd be a good idea if we had signage at our park stadium, and it was open when it was closed, that way we can prosecute them for trespassing. So the sign we have a problem with is over at Amphitheater side. So I, I don't know what kind of language or signage or whatever we need to put up, I thought, you know, we'll run it through minutes and see what y'all want to, want to say.
AV, can we do something with the, on the amphitheater side first? Can we not do something, it is, it is closed to the public?
Yes.
Except for a sponsor event?
Absolutely.
Okay. That way you don't have to worry about time, there'd be, I don't want to put times on it like we do the other, because then it has nobody's business over there anytime, unless there is an event going on.
Okay. I don't know if I'd put a sponsored event.
Scheduled event.
Scheduled, there, scheduled. Okay.
Like the day of scheduled events? I mean, do we need to narrow it down to a time frame?
I think the hours of a scheduled event, because day, you don't know, 8:00 AM in the morning, they don't need to be there, but that night they might, but scheduled.
Yeah, I think I would just put closed to the public, except for, except during scheduled events, and just kind of, that leaves it a little bit loose. Where, you know, if they come in earlier in the day, and I say we're closed to public, that means we can still be back there working, prepping for that event, and.
Well, the only people that need to be back are the people that need to be working on that thing.
Right, exactly.
That's it, I mean, as far as I'm concerned.
If we had to sign us up, I think we could have charged a little more, so.
We did end up charging the, one was 19, the other two was due now, we did end up charging the one with no lawful transactional amount, times two, because of criminal summons is what ended up being taken out to the law. He hadn't been served yet, so he hadn't had court date set yet, but they shook the window, they didn't break the window, or anything, that time. Somebody did fly before, but.
But there's cameras down there.
But there's cameras now, so.
If, if he wouldn't turn to see the cameras, I'm not sure what we were doing.
Do what?
If the individual wouldn't turn to see the cameras.
Oh, yeah, can't turn to three cameras.
Yeah.
Don't look. Is there a sign up at the entrance?
No. Twenty-four point one hundred cents per hundred.
And, uh, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same, motion passes. Next item is to approve the Arbor Day resolution. This is something we usually do in, actually in probably the April meeting. It's part of the Tree City USA program that we've been involved with for the last four or five years. And, uh, of course, everybody's in the same boat we're in, so what they're doing, and because of the way this, uh, Tree City USA program's set up, it doesn't necessarily have to be on the true Arbor Day of April, uh, because they encourage, you know, plant tree and promote the trees. So we, I've talked to, uh, the lady in Frankfurt, and we were looking at setting the date of October twenty-third, which is a Friday, late October planting season kind of thing. So we would like to go ahead and approve that resolution.
Move to approve Arbor Day resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same, motion passes. David, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a couple things. Last month, we talked about twenty-three, we were dipping it down. I got with Finley Fire Department, they provided us a few votes, big signature. Um, one is for parks, and one is parks and labor. The park, I think it's forty-seven dollars, and the labor with the park is forty-seven dollars. He said the labor should be less, he suspects, because that's just the worst case scenario, depending if he runs an issue or is working on it. And I spoke with Larry, and he said that right now, we're still tied up on, I'm getting the park to be able to put it in.
We need to get that truck back on, so I'd like to see this purchased. And if I have put in some, I'd like to...
The four seventy-nine fourteen. It's this one?
Yeah. To approve the four seventy-nine fourteen, I move to approve that quote from Finley.
Yes, Finley Fire Department.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same, motion passes.
And then did you guys update, last, last meeting, Larry asked permission vote to approve the process of just taking the truck out. Um, I have met with Keith Puckett, who's the sales rep for Pierce Manufacturing. Um, he's been with us with a basic spec sheet, they just kind of got it to go off of. We established a truck committee, sat down and kind of went through a series of things that we could take out that wasn't needed, and then some things that we would have to add, like, one of the things we'd have to add, for instance, this truck is expected of a seven hundred and fifty gallon tank. The way our ISO ratings work, we run off of three inches of thousand gallons, so there's a few little minor detail like that back and forth. This is just a starting, we're gonna look at also other drugs and different ways to do things. But this kind of gives us a starting point to go off of. He gave us a rough estimate, it was about, where I, I told you guys, it would be about four, fifty or so, is about what he's expecting it to be at. I've got copies of those, if anybody wants to look at what I said, it's just a starting point kind of thing, to give us a guideline to go off of. And the other thing is, is in the past, our vote was declared surplus. We sold, we seen especially with what we had a couple weeks ago, or a week ago, that it's a need. The boat's been down for a long time, and it was declared surplus, so we wasn't obviously gonna put any money into the truck fix and get it up and going. We've looked into the boat, it's looking like it needs a water pump and a battery. I would like to know if it was possible if we could remove that boat from surplus and get it back in service. You know, Rochester Dam, they're doing a lot of upgrades to it during the process, when they get done, they'll have a boat ramp down there. We're also, there's only two departments in Canada that actually have a boat, it's us and Hartford, so. With us having, gonna have river access and the situation we had down here South Lafayette area, along with all the people out here on the Dakota. My personal opinion, I think the boat being rid of, it would be a disservice, but I know it was declared surplus, I don't know how that exactly works.
If I'm going from memory, when there's somebody, another department was wanting it too, weren't they? And that fell through.
I think Chris was willing to trade it for a box trailer or something, you know, just because it's declared surplus, it's still our property, you know, we don't have to...
So we don't have to do anything, we can just...
I don't think so, but it, it's still our property.
What's the question?
If something, we've declared surplus, do we have to declare it back in service again, or can we just go ahead and put it back in service?
You, what have, what have we done at this point? It's...
It's declared, it's declared out of service because it's, it's, they had some work to be done on it. What they're wanting to do now is go ahead and do the work on it and put it back in service. It was declared surplus.
We had another agency who was interested in it, so we declared it surplus, but then that deal, for whatever reason, fell through. We never did, wasn't able to get rid of it, now they're wanting to go ahead and plan on keeping it.
Did the, did the city take an official action on it?
Just to, uh, declare it surplus.
I'd do, I, I would do the same thing. I'd, I'd pass a motion, if what you want to do is take it out, use it.
Yeah, declare it back in service.
I, I would just declare it back in service.
Be the easiest way.
I, I'll make a motion, we remove the vote from surplus and, uh, put, repair it and put it back in service.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same, motion passed. Mike? Justin? James?
I'm good, fine.
Nothing tonight.
I'm good, I took Larry up and we did, looked at some things up at the cemetery last week, got those taken care of, and everything else is going good. We haven't had anything go on at the park, so I can't, that's not going on down there.
What is this?
Oh, that's, we're officially get to that. I just have one thing I'd like to do. We have, uh, and I was supposed to do it last month, and I'll be honest with you, I, I think it was that day I actually got everything finalized, or maybe the next day, because David and I have been working on it. Uh, an attorney for code enforcement, and I just need approval of that. I've talked with Travis Johnson, and he's, he's agreed to do it. And it's a two hundred and fifty dollar per hour rate, they do charge at the ten minute intervals. And it's, it's a as-needed thing. Frank Martin had done it for years, and of course, he's retired.
Right.
And it's something we're not allowed, our city attorney's not allowed to do it. It's gotta be something separate, so, and I don't think he wanted to do it anyway. But Travis was willing to do it, so I just need approval of that, so we can get that lodged in minutes.
I make a motion, we accept Travis to do it.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same, that motion passes. Larry?
Yes, I got a couple things, I need to close session for, just a little bit.
Okay. Does this, what about this?
You know, this here, you know, we're not charging, we're not doing disconnects on our social, uh, we're not charging penalties. This is a list of people that are, uh, in the rears for one month, two months, three months. We're reading Wednesday this week, so there's gonna be some in the four month range. Some have, has not even attempted to pay any. We've had a couple to actually move off, and, you know, we're still stuck with the bill. So this, this is what we're looking at, uh, when, when we do get to disconnect, what's our process gonna be? I understand if they call me arrangements, we'll, we'll do payments for them, but...
It's almost seven thousand dollars.
Yep.
Yep.
Well, I thought the governor removed the stipulation about evictions, is that not included in that, that we could do that?
I don't think he's...
Well, I read that in one of the papers, that he...
I think Indiana has, right, because I was hoping you could do it.
I don't, but I don't think he has.
Okay, well, maybe...
We can double check that, but I don't think he has. Uh, and he's not gonna pay us for it. Uh, I would like to see us, any of them that don't look at small claims action. It's not fair to all the other rate payers that are paying their water bill. I mean, we're trying to do something to help people. Uh, and like I said, we already had to move off, so you know they're not gonna attempt it unless we...
I've got two, but I think I have another one that I'm discovering now.
So we would need that in the form of a motion. If, once everything goes back in, and of course, the two and maybe three we know of that have moved off, I'd like to see, let's approve the, to take small claim action against any of them.
Well, I mean, this one is really high. I mean, I don't mean to be, compared to the others, this one's really, really high. Is that a business?
Which one?
The three months, the number six?
Two.
Now it is a business.
That is a business.
The number two is a residential.
Wow.
And did I write that on y'all's, paid three hundred and fourteen dollars, or did I just make that note on mine? That was when they last...
That's a residential.
The residential one? The residential one made a payment?
The number two made me a payment of three hundred and fourteen.
Oh, okay. That helps.
So, but the number six is a business.
Is that the one we talked about?
South End, yeah, the South End.
Mm-hmm.
They've not even made any income?
They're closed.
They're closed.
That business is closed.
If they're closed, okay, is it they have an automatic water bill come out minimum or something, or?
They're still getting, and actually, they've had a little bit of usage, I don't know if there's ice and chandeliers or what's causing that usage, but I mean, they're not getting nothing near what they would if they were open. But I think it's for sale, and I think in their rule that they want your utilities on when you got something.
Probably, because it costs so much to rehook it up, yeah.
So...
Well, AV, let me ask you this. The governor had the emergency that we could not turn utilities off, and would that go for a business as well? I can understand a residential, but would that include a business?
I, I don't remember exactly, exactly what he said. If, if he didn't specifically reference residential customers, and just said all water customers, for example.
Okay.
It would include, it would include businesses as well, but it shouldn't. Really shouldn't.
Yeah.
Because the ones you're trying to protect...
Right, and, and I understand that, that's...
Yeah, the residential customers.
In fact, I think we were doing it before he, that first month, we were doing it before he put it in his mandate, but...
And I don't know whether it's been, it's been changed. In other words, where he's put, removed it.
Last I heard, it hadn't been, because that's one of the big things that, on the KLC meetings and stuff we have, that's one of the big discussion items, because all these mayors are having the same problem. They've got, and a lot of them have a lot more money than this tied up. And they're starting to question, you know, what, when...
Do these people, are these people kept the same position all the way across?
Wait, wait.
Like number six is number six all the way across?
No, no.
No, no.
Sorry?
Have we ever taken anybody's small claims on?
I, not to my knowledge. Have we ever taken?
Not in my opinion, we never have.
The two that's already gone, gone, moved, we didn't take them as small claims, they've gone.
But one issue we have with that is, they just, like, the one that I found last week that I sent Travis to go check, and I guess they actually spoke with the people to find out, this is a new crew that's just moved in, so they went ahead and turned the water off. And the post office had mailed me their bill back with the little yellow sticker giving me moved, left no forwarding. So therefore, I have no forwarding address for these people, so I don't know where to find them. In order to try to take them to court.
Well, we may not be able to, but, but we have to approve it here before we can even look to attempt it.
A little bit of a battle.
What about, don't we set that, don't we have an agreement with Hartford and stuff on turning water on, checking that?
I think it's Hartford's turn.
But, but I know we can't take them if we didn't approve it here, and that's what we were just trying to get everybody's inclination, what they thought.
And that business is for sale. And, or they don't, we don't know whether they're taking care of any of their utilities?
I don't know about like, or like, or anything else, I don't know.
I, I just...
Because they can't, they can't turn it off either.
Yeah, they're probably just gonna just...
I don't, I don't understand though, carrying that much of a bill on somebody and, and them not making any kind of effort.
Yeah, Mary, the, the business from the seven thirty-nine, that's the total for three months, right?
Three months.
They're three plus months behind the ones in that column, and keep in mind, if you notice your little date there, it's in the corner of my paper, y'all's is bigger. But I did this last week, so as of today, technically, July bill is owed and is not included in any of these amounts as well.
No, I know, but that seven thirty-nine, that includes month one, month two, and month three, total.
It's probably gonna include March, April, May, June, and now we got July, which is not included in this.
No, I, I know, but it's not seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars for one month, and then he's, he's under column two as well.
No, no, no.
That's what I thought, I think that's what James was...
No, he's not under column two, column, column three is all by itself.
Column three is all people that's three months or four.
I know, but if, if you first look at it, and that was the first thing I thought too, okay, these people are three months behind, well, that means they're also two months behind. That's why I was asking, is that a lump sum total for all three months?
No. Well, but only in this one column is all that...
Yes, and then in the two months, that's a lump sum for two months, and this is the one individual monthly bill.
Since the corona hit. I said, some people had it since the corona hit.
No.
I mean, considering the number of active accounts we got, if you notice, our numbers are pretty good, to be honest with you, but...
Two percent, a little over two percent.
Well, we killed, I don't give a left to motion as soon as we're seeing, taking the fall play for, if that's possible.
I say, there may be something you may not find, you may not be able to, but we can't do it at all if we don't approve this.
I know, I, I give a motion as soon as we're able to take them fall play. Well, then do it, tell us no.
We have a motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same, motion passes. Anything else before we do the closed session? We need a motion to go into closed session.
I make a motion, we're going to closed session.
Second.
So pushing to show you grant me one of your...
I move to go back in open session.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, and we're back in open session. Discuss, we did discuss parts and no issues, and of course, no business was conducted in that open session, so... All right?
I make that motion?
Mm-hmm. We need...
Uh, I wanna make a motion to hire Mark Crowe, effective as soon as he can get here, uh, starting at a rate of twelve, was it, twelve dollars? I'm sorry? For sanitation department.
Second. We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same, motion passes.
And then a motion for, what was it, Zach?
Zach Ball.
Zach Ball. And he would start at ten fifty, go to eleven after ninety days, no?
Ten fifty.
Ten fifty straight up, and will he be on sanitation also?
Sanitation.
Second.
Immediately.
Immediately, yeah.
Uh, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? And I will point out, just for your case, the ten fifty, the difference in, Mark has got a CDL license, so that's, that's why there's a...
Variation there.
Variation in the, okay, uh, motion is second, uh, those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same, motion passes.
We have a little license.
Cox.
Make a motion, we hire Jesse Cox at the rate of...
Eleven dollars.
Eleven dollars.
For water, sir.
For water, sir.
Hey.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Uh, whenever you...
As soon as possible.
Yeah, as soon as possible, because he may have, I don't know if he's working tomorrow's week, if he's getting noticed or not, but he may need to, so. Uh, motion, a second, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Post same, motion passes. Anyone have anything else to bring up?
Make a motion with, Joe?
Both applications is in hand, so I'm gonna go with all of them.
We've got it covered, but... Thank you all very much.
I tell you, you bet. Let me know when you want to sign that.